I called to order the Committee of the Whole, Verona City Council meeting, Monday, November 12th at 8:00 PM. Next we'll have the roll.
Here Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Cronin?
Present.
Alderperson Gaskell?
Here.
Alderperson Journey?
Here.
Alderperson Kemp?
Here.
Alderperson Cole?
Here.
Alderperson Posey?
Here.
Alderperson Ricky?
Here.
Alderperson Touche?
Present.
Alright, good, we didn't lose anybody. Next. Not now. Next up, we will have public comment. Seem to have lost members of the public, though, but if there's any members of the public who are sitting outside of the room and wanna run in and have a public comment, no? Alright. With that, we'll move on to item four, which is the approval of the minutes from the October 15th, 2018 meeting. Question, comments, motions?
Move approval.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 15th, 2018 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Minutes are approved. Next up, item five, which is the presentation of the proposed 2019 city budget. Brian, if you would.
For. We'll wait till we get the presentation on the screens. Well, thank you. Eight o'clock at night, we're gonna talk about budget. But first of all, I wanted to go ahead and thank Finance Director Brian Lammers. He's done a tremendous amount of work to help put the proposed budget together. Also wanted to thank the department heads. When we needed to start looking at reductions, they sharpened their pencil and did a great job to help us move forward with some reductions. With that, the City of Verona is continuing to grow. 2018 population numbers, the state numbers, show us at 12,384. It's not as quick of an increase that we've seen in the past, but we are still increasing. From 2010, we still are showing a 16.6% increase in population, so we are still moving forward. Equalized value, 2018, we see an additional increase in equalized value. So, things are still moving forward. Developments are still occurring in the city. When you look at the percent change for equalized value without the TID districts, you see that 2018, although we're continuing to grow and increase, it's at a little bit less of a percentage than we have in the past, but we are still moving forward and increasing in equalized value. When you look at new construction, net new construction, you can see that we've had tremendous years in the past few, where we've added $250 million of assessed value in 2014. 2016, 2017, we did 200 million and a little bit less. In 2018, we didn't do, we still are moving forward. We increased our assessed value roughly $100 million, but you can see from the graph that the growth is a little bit slower than we have had in the past few years. But we are continuing to grow and develop. The 2019 proposed budget does a number of things. Wanted to highlight a few of them. The budget meets the municipal levy limit. Levy limit is $13,721,908. It shows that net new construction increased the assessed values by 3.86%. It maintains city services, although we did have to look at cuts. City services have been maintained at the levels they are currently. We are adding, from last year's budget to this year's budget, two positions. Human Resources Coordinator, that's the position that council approved this year, earlier this year. And the Patrol Officer, that will start in July of 2019. It will fund a third ambulance and crew for the Fitch Verona EMS. Supports substantial number of park improvements, and we'll get to a little bit more details on some of these issues. Supports a roof replacement for the senior center. It continues to provide additional funding for pedestrian and bike improvements. Funds the design for the new public works facility. Funds the trail from Fireman's Park to County M or Main Street. It also looks at borrowing. Now, the number of ways that we've tried to reduce the amount of borrowing. It funds 100% of the street program, both through levy and through fund balance. That has not been done in the past. We were happy to get 50% levy, 50% borrowing, but this year, we're able to do 100% of levy and fund balance. It funds capital projects at the level of $597,015. Continues to fund projects that, through public safety and parks, for the replacement equipment through the levy, and it also continues to fund facility replacement programs through the levy. It also provides for a 2% cost of living increase for non-represented employees. For the fire department, represented employees, they will be receiving, based on the contract, a 2% increase, and based on the police department's contract, the represented police department will receive 3% cost of living increase. Now, there have been a couple pressures that were placed on the budget this year. First, the debt service continues to increase, based on the amount of borrowing we have done in the past this year. 452,000 increase in debt service payments. Fitch Verona EMS, the third ambulance, increased the city's portion of the levy by $85,779. And the library's minimum funding level increased by $118,745. If you recall, we had a substantial increase in the equalized value, and we tried to, instead of putting all the money of the match for the library in one year, we spread it out over five years. So each of the next five years, we'll see an increase in minimum funding of the library. It's all based on the closure of the TID number seven or the Epic TIF. Of these six, of these pressures, 656,000 created restrictions on the growth of other departments. These are three things that were necessary or approved by council that had to move forward, so we had to find reductions in other projects and other departments. When you look at the levy limit, the base is the prior year's actual levy, which was 13,329,000. We did not provide any debt adjustments, so the increase would be by the net new construction, and that added 514,774. Because of the new law with the personal property tax on manufacturing properties, it offset an increase of 122,000, a little over 122,000. That money is provided to us as a state aid, but it was not seen as an increase in the levy. It was basically offset by the state aid. So the allowable levy, allowable levy, as I said before, was 13,729,908, or basically an increase of $9392,691. If we move forward beyond this levy, you'd have to make some changes that would impact your levy of the next year. Looking at the tax levy, it's broken into a number of different areas, and you can see that the bigger increases are the three pressures that were on our budget, which was the library, the EMS, and the debt service, excuse me. So in order to reduce the amount of levy to meet the levy limit, we had to look at reducing the general fund. We reduced 136,000 out of the general fund. We reduced 206,000 out of the capital and replacement funds. The other departments had just minor increases, but altogether, we met the levy limit. Breakdown of the levy. General fund basically is 36% of the levy. Debt service is 29%. And then the other portions of the levy, you can see from from fire department to capital improvements, forestry is a small portion, but still there. Senior Center, EMS, and the library at 7%. Looking at it differently, if the levy was a dollar, 36 cents would be the general fund, 29 cents would be debt service. So that plays into one of the concerns that Moody's provided to us earlier in the year, when we were borrowing the 2018 funds, that if we didn't look at controlling the amount of borrowing, the debt service would continue to increase and create additional problems for the city. Looking at the general fund, which is beyond the, just the levy, 35, I'm sorry, 55% of the overall general fund is, receives money from the property taxes or levy. Other taxes, which include the payment in lieu of taxes for municipal utilities, intergovernmental revenues are the state aid licensing and permits, and then at a smaller level, the interest in investments, public charges, fines and forfeitures. Applied funds is the amount of money that we're putting into the general fund from the fund balance. Other revenues, as I mentioned, state revenue, because of the new aid for personal property tax, state revenues increased over, a little over 19%. 2018, we did qualify for expenditure restraint. That provided $34,000 into the 2019 budget. We also saw an increase in highway aids by 8.28%. That's based on the amount of money that we're putting into the city's infrastructure and street improvements. Other major revenues, again, I mentioned the utility payment in lieu of taxes. That's about $760,000. Building permits and fees, because we have a number of projects that are going to be starting next year, we've got a substantial increase in permits, about $840,000 of increased revenue going for building permits and inspections. The general fund expenditures, roughly 40% is public safety, police, fire. That's what a municipality should. The most money we put toward services should be police and fire. Government, general government comes up with 14%. And recreations, a little over 10%, public works 16%. The development, about 5.6% and then smaller portions for the remainder. So it's similar to the previous years as how the expenditures are broken out for the general fund. The impact to residents, when we're looking at the proposed budget versus the 2018 budget, we're gonna break it into two sections. One is the before TID levy, and then we'll talk about the after TID levy in a bit. But there's a 2.94% change, increase in the proposed budget, again, before TID. City's estimated proportion of mill rate. When you look at before TID in 2018, we were at 5.54 for $1,000 of assessed value. We're going up to 5.568 per thousand assessed value. Whereas we had a reduction from the 2017 to 2018 budget, we are proposing on the before TID of a minor 0.43% increase in the 2019 proposed budget. Gets a little more interesting when we look at the after TID. Due to an error that we're trying to correct, we have an error based on our assessed values that are going into one of our TID districts. The error was based on TID six and TID eight, where TID eight is a overlay district onto TID six. There were some errors that were created. The assessor put in the incorrect numbers. It wasn't caught at the state, or it wasn't caught by the city when the state provided us numbers in August. And we did just recently realize that there were some some problems with the way in which the assessed value for the TID districts was created. So right now, we've got two scenarios. One is the values that were provided to the state and confirmed at the state level in August. And those are proposed with the state numbers. If we did, if we're not able to make a correction, the increase in the property levy would be about 2.71%. We'd be going up to 5.92 per thousand dollars of assessed value. When you look at a house that is $272,000 of assessed value, there'd be a $42 increase for the city's portion of the tax bill. We've been working with the state over the last week, trying to get a correction from the state. We do believe we're going to be moving forward with making that correction. With that correction, it drops the numbers down to a 0.72% increase after TID, which equates to $11.35 for a $272,000 home. So the estimated mill rate for the city's portion of the taxes would be 5.81%.
Thank, I just want to ask, does anyone have any questions at this point?
What does that look like? Since 2010, the graph shows where the city's portion of the tax, the city's portion of the tax rate came in. You can see, over the last few years, we've been dropping in our mill rate. In 2019, the 5.81 would increase, like I said, 0.72% over 2018. If we are not able to make that correction, you see that portion in red, it would go up to 5.92 for the city's portion of the mill rate. What's covered in our proposed budget? First off, the capital levy. These are capital projects that we're covering with levy funds, so that we don't have to borrow for these projects. First off, mill and overlay, like I said, 225,000 of the levy plus 460 of fund balance are covering the full street program. 10,000 for the sidewalk program. Parks, we have a number of projects that equals to $182,500. It includes the prorrestoration, skate park improvements, replacement structure at Sanetti Park, mini excavator in the trail to County M next to Fireman's Park. We also included a $10,000 feasibility study, if as we move forward with the new public works facility, what happens with the existing public works facility. So that will be able to provide us some direction as we move forward with the new public works facility. Police, there's an additional patrol vehicle, because we're adding one additional patrol officer. EMS, again, the third ambulance. Now, this is the ambulance itself. That's an additional 43,000 that's covered in levy, in addition to funds that were already set aside for that ambulance last year. Fire, traffic preemption and equipment totaling $30,000, and the senior roof replacement for 31,000. Again, any questions, please feel free to ask.
Alder Journey.
So with the ambulance, will that mean additional personnel?
There will be seven people hired, I think mid-year for the EMS service. And when we looked at the $85,000 of increased levy for the ambulance service, that's only half a year. So the next year, there'll be an additional 85,000 to cover the full year for those seven positions.
Other questions?
Beyond capital levy, we're continuing to put money into replacement funds with levy funds. $510,000 into equipment and facility replacement funds. Again, it's a way in which we can pool money together, so that we don't have to borrow if a piece of equipment goes out, or HVAC system, or something like that. We can, we have the availability of funds, so they won't have to borrow for it. In addition, the capital levy that I just provided, all told, capital and replacement funds, we're putting 100, excuse me, $1,107,015 into capital and replacement funds from the levy. That leaves the general borrowing. And right now, we're looking at, if, as we move forward with these, with the budget, these projects will total a little over $5.1 million. That includes the design work for the new public works facility, the agreement with VSD for a million dollars, replacement of ladder truck number three, the final funding of County M improvements from cross-country to PD, that's a part that's in the city. Bicycle and pet improvements, 300,000, and the Lincoln Street Stormwater Pond, which is 1.5 million dollars.
Just to clarify, for the Lincoln Street Stormwater Pond, that'll be as part of the water utility and not part of the city's general borrowing?
That's correct. I mean, this is the total amount of borrowing. It's not just general obligation, it's a utility as well. That's correct.
Thank you.
The concern we have regarding the debt service, the total debt service would be expected to be 7.4 million, but that's broken out between TIF districts, water sewer and storm water, and library debt service as well included in that. What offsets debt service are police impact fees, fire impact fees, and library impact fees. And then additional utility revenue. That's right. Yeah. We have an ongoing project that will be covered. Sorry, missed that one. This is the general obligation debt. Right now, the city's got $55 million in general obligation debt. That's creating the debt service costs. There's two different margins that we look at. One is at the state level. State requires us to not go over 5% of allowable equalized value. At 5%, we would be allowed to borrow up to $145 million. We're $90 million short of that margin. The city's policy reduces the ability to borrow down to, we would not be able to go beyond 3.75% of the equalized value. That would be the maximum allowable debt would be $109 million. And we're $54 million away from there. Or 50% of the total that we could borrow, we are borrowing. Now, the $55 million does not include the enterprise funds, the sewer water, storm water. All told, the amount of debt for the general fund and enterprise funds is $56,176,000. This is just a graphical way of showing, even though the blue line, which is general obligation, is increasing, the red line, which is the allowable debt, is increasing at a faster rate, because our assessed values are continuing to increase faster than what at a faster rate because our assessed values are continuing to increase faster than what, than what we're borrowing, which is a good thing. But, we want to, you know, continue to see the, the blue line flatten out or, or reduce down. That way, the, we have more money to to spend without paying for the debt service on, on borrowing. Another way of looking at debt service, you, you know, we just had a bunch of projects close out for roughly two point nine million dollars. Most of that was, was debt. So, because of those projects, our debt service over the years is continuing to increase. Right now, the, the, the general debt service on the debt ser- I'm sorry, the general debt service levy is about four hundred and four thousand dollars. I'm sorry, it's four point four million dollars. At a zero in the wrong spot. But, again, the, the debt service is continuing to increase. If we control the amount of borrowing that we do over the next few years, we can see that debt, that service starting to level off, and as the borrowing is, is paid up, it can start reducing down. As far as fund balance, the projection for the fund balance for 2019 is thirty-five percent. In April, we passed a, a policy that, our financial management policy, that allows the, the city to maintain twenty-five percent or up to thirty-five percent fund balance in, in the general fund. Anything beyond the thirty-five percent gets put back into one-time projects. And in this case, we, we put four hundred and sixty thousand dollars into the street program, so we didn't have to borrow that money. The remaining amount is thirty-five percent, and we're, we're meeting our obligation based Questions? Concerns, issues?
Questions for Mr. McCorskey? Alder Gaskill?
I don't have questions in particular on the budget presentation. I'm wondering, well, I'm, I'm not wondering, it would be useful if we can get sort of next steps, because we have a number of alders, and this is their first budget. What are your expectations of us? What do we need to do to be prepared for next Monday, please?
We were waiting on the, the state to, to get out the, our narrative on our budget. I think we're, we're going to move forward with making the changes we need and, and provide that to council. That'll help provide the information that I, I gave you on the presentation, and additional information to, to look through for Monday. The, the, the next step would be amendments. If council would be requesting any amendments for the, the budget, I've already sent out to council a, a budget amendment form. That would be, we would need to get that back by Thursday noon, so that we can get that into the, the packet for next week. Budget amendments are basically looking at if, if you would like additional money for a project, we'd be requesting what you'd like to reduce to, to pay for that project. Then, council would then take on each of the amendments on Monday and, and vote whether the amendment moves forward or, or does not. If it moves forward, then it gets included into the budget, and then, Monday, we would hope to, council would take action on the budget. And if there's any questions from now to, to Monday, please contact Brian, myself, to, to get any clarification that you need.
And if I could just add a comment of my own, yeah, amendments, it's, it, this is like any other motion, so you can add, you could have an amendment to add a position, funding, whatever, or you could have it to take something out. It's
That's correct.
Can, can change anything, anything in the budget, but, but as Mr. McCorskey says, it's, you know, you want to be cognizant of the fact that if you do add something, it costs money, and there might be a, a corresponding cut or a potential raise of the limit, limit. And so, we want to be careful and well considered about that.
And typically, if you're looking to, to make an amendment that has an impact on the operating costs, it makes sense to, to look at the operating cost to, to make a reduction. We don't, it's very hard to, to reduce a one-time project, one-time cost, to improve, increase costs on a, an operational or an ongoing activity, because the following year, we're going to have, you know, it's going to just add to the, the operating cost, not the, the one-time costs.
Alder Touche.
All, in addition, on the amendments, try to get them in early so that the rest of the council can review them before the meeting, because if I'm asked to vote on something that someone wants to change, I'd like to ponder on it before the meeting, because I will, if I don't have enough time to consider it, I'm not going to vote for it, so.
What we would do is, if, if I receive the amendment, we send it directly out to council, so that you have enough time to, to review it, and then, it, it gets brought up next Monday prior to the action on the budget itself.
I typically validate against department heads, kind of what their thoughts are, so it's my normal process.
Now, this year, there were a lot of pressures, so there were projects that, and, and things that were removed from the requested budgets of, of departments, but that was a necessary evil to, to get to the, to meet the, the levy limit and, and work in the, the pressures that were put on the, on the budget itself.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Alder Cole?
Do you have a deadline for when you would like any amendments?
Thursday at noon would be a, the, the deadline. That way, we are able to get it into the packet for the, the upcoming council meeting.
Additional, additional, Alder Gaskill?
I just have a question, I'm not sure if either one of you can answer it, I'm just wondering about the ladder three truck. And so, the fire department budget typically passes through which body for approval first?
It actually just goes through Finance Committee.
Okay. It is the ladder three, then, is that on a regular schedule for replacement, and it turns out it's this year?
I think it's been requested for a few years, it's been pushed back, I know, at least two years. Yes.
What happens with the existing ladder three? I'm assuming we could sell it and recoup some cost, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I don't have the, the date of the, the one that you're replacing, but it's
Yeah, Alder Kim?
I, it, that truck is from nineteen ninety-seven,
Oh, thank you.
And it doesn't have, there's a roof at Epic. The new truck would have an arm that would go down on top of the roof, so it's different than any of the other trucks that we have at this point, so.
I think it has other, other, yeah, other functions. If you're reaching out, you can, you can go under other things as well, but.
Additional questions from the council?
Was it, there was, I didn't hear if there's answered the resale, the trade-in or whatever for the ladder truck, what was that? How do we find out more about this, I guess is where I'm at?
Alder Kim?
Well, I believe the chief came in, he had a buyer, don't quote me on this, but I think down in Illinois, that was prepared to purchase, am I correct in that?
Yeah.
That was prepared to buy the old ladder three. I can't remember what the numbers were on that, but.
I don't remember either. Keep in mind, though, with passing the budget doesn't mean that you're approving the bonding for the fire truck, just for an example. But, the one thing we might look at, if the budget does get approved with the ladder truck in, we may come early in the year and get an approval to purchase that with the bonding, so you're kind of preapproving the bonding ahead of time, because if he gets, gets it ordered earlier, the better deal he can get. So, it's kind of, we can't kind of hold off and wait until we actually do the bonding in June on some of these projects, so we may come to the council earlier to get preapproval to, to buy
Yeah.
Or get it ordered ahead of time before we even approve the bonding. But, in essence, you are approving the bonding then ahead of time, so we can go out and get it purchased.
That's fair. I, I just, I think there's a little, it's a big number.
Agreed.
I, I just want to say thank you to city staff, especially the finance director and department heads for, for going through and looking at everything. I know every department has important projects, and sometimes it can be really hard to wait, but I really appreciate everyone putting in good faith effort into making sure we're responsible with public money. Last chance for questions? All right, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So, moved.
Motion by Alder Gaskill?
Aye.
Second of Alder Touche. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are adjourned. Thank you.